I hereby call the second day of the third special session of the 20th Congress session. May we all rise for a moment of silent prayer.
Senator Alek, Senator Aritos, Senator Figuerre, Senator Coulent, Floor Leader Harper, Senator Conman, Vice Speaker, I mean, Senator Neath, Senator Panuelo.
Aye, my.
Senator Perman.
Aye.
Senator Romelo, Senator Urusmau, Senator Wally. Presiding, Acting Presiding Speaker Moses.
Yes.
Mrs. Speaker, 12 members are present.
For that, we have a quorum. And next item.
Mr. Speaker, item four, reading of the journal.
Floor Leader Harper.
Thank you, Acting Speaker. Before I make my usual motion, I simply want to say that you really look handsome looking down from there. So I now move that we dispense with the reading of the journal.
It's been moved and seconded that we dispense of the reading of our journal. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carried. We have now dispensed with the reading of the journal. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker, item number five, presidential communications on receipt of numbers 20-165 and 20-166.
Assign those. Next item.
Item six, FSM Supreme Court communications, there are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Next item.
Item seven, member communications, none.
Next item.
Item eight, departmental communications, on receipt of number 20-32.
Assign that. Next item.
Item nine, agency or governmental authority communications, none, Mrs. Speaker.
Next item.
Item 10, state communications, there are none also.
Next item.
Item 11, state Supreme Court communications, none.
Next item.
Item 12, municipal or town communications, there are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Next item.
Item 13, foreign government communications, none.
Order of the day.
Item 14, Mrs. Speaker, under order of the day, standing committee reports, we have an awaiting list number 20-18.
Members, please take note. Chairman Figuerre, standing committee reports.
Recede.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. May I? Floor Leader.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. If proper and necessary, I move that we go down to item number 15.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress move to item number 15 on today's calendar. Any discussion? If none, we shall vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. We are now on item number 15, special committee reports. Chairman Panuelo.
Speaker, good morning to you, good morning to members and those who are observing from the gallery. Mrs. Speaker, I move that special committee report number 20-07 be adopted. So move.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt special committee report number 20-07. Discussion? Chairman Panuelo, you still have the floor.
Speaker, thank you. Speaker, your committee to wait on the president met Vice President yesterday and the cabinet. The committee consisted of members Chairman Wally, Chairman Urusmau, and Chairman Coulent, including myself. When we met with the Vice President, Mr. Speaker, the agenda items prepared were kind of aligned with what we members talked about, those important items and urgent items that will be brought up during the session. The first item, Mr. Speaker, is the Air Nukini resolution transmitted to Congress for the half, for the 800,000 grant provided by China to continue the subsidy of Air Nukini. Discussions were held on that with the Vice President and the cabinet. And your committee, special committee, reported that we will expedite the adoption of that resolution during this session. It was discussed that there is proposed changes to the schedule, but that would be confirmed to Congress. They're proposing to bring in a slightly bigger aircraft and do a schedule that will be reduced from twice a week to once a week schedule, but that's not confirmed. I think we refer to the Committee of DNC to hold further public hearings on that to confirm that information with that proposed change. The other agenda item that was brought up was the transmission of resolution to approve a grant of 5,500,000 from World Bank with the advance agreement for preparation of proposed World Bank finance projects. This is on the Ida 18, funding from World Bank to the FSM for a three-year cycle that would be implemented over the next three years. And as has been reported in the committee to wait, the sectors are listed there. The first sector is energy, and I think the allocation is 25 million for energy. The second is marine transportation, and the allocation is 19 million. And the third item is ICD, and if I'm not mistaken, allocation is 12 million. And the final sector is financial management, and the allocation is 7 million. Amount of money to help design the projects that will be forthcoming from Ida 18. Again, we reported to the Vice President that respect to committees will hold hearing which was held this morning, and I thank the good chairman of Ways and Means. So I believe that report will be forthcoming for the adoption of this 5.5 million. Mr. Speaker, the third item is a resolution to accept grant from the U.S. Department of Interior. It's also being transmitted to Congress to help with the expenses involved in the single audit. As we all know, this is a requirement under the compact, so it's a straightforward expense that is appropriated by Congress on an annual basis. For the agenda that was discussed by your committee to wait on the president was the proposed amendments to the Foreign Investment Act, and they're requesting that we give priority to this item. Members, Speaker and members, you will recall that your committee on RND have taken out this item to all of the four states. And the reason why this, your committee has held up this particular bill is because the states requested that we hold up to get their input before we move on to enact the bill. So that's what we reported, Mr. Speaker. The fifth item is the proposed amendments to the Financial Management Act. And this morning, your committee on Ways and Means also held hearings with the finance and the respective witnesses, and they presented that there are, there are proposed changes that they are making to the Financial Management Act. Details can be discussed later, but they're merely proposing to change certain sections of the law to increase. From 1,000 to 3,000. Purchase of personal property from 1,000 to 20,000 to 3,000 to 49,999. And the other proposed amendment is to make all of these accountable for their representation funds, and that is to officials of the FSM National Government. The sixth item that was discussed in the agenda, Mr. Speaker, is the other important projects that the executive is asking, and that includes the dry talking of vessels H1 and chief Milo ships and the 725,000 for the removal of hazardous materials from the vessel that was grounded, Ping Da. Other items that were briefly discussed included the status of compact funded infrastructure projects, and Chuk Road was brought up and was discussed in some detail, and the good chairman of TCI was there, and I think there's a good exchange between the cabinet and your committee to wait. Other projects included requests for funding on antibiotics to fight rheumatic heart disease in children. Your committee, we requested that the Committee of HSA engage in further hearings to review any money and assessment that needs to be done throughout FSM. Also approval of additional funding under the U.S. Education Supplemental Grant, COG, and second five-year review for the amended compact. Mr. Speaker, these are the highlights of the discussion. I request and ask that other members of the committee to wait supplement my oral report or summary to the report that's submitted. So, Speaker, that's what I can share with what transpired with the Vice President and Cabinet yesterday. Thank you, and I ask that other members supplement my summary. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Panuelo, for your report. Any further discussion?
Move for the adoption of the report.
Chairman Urusmau.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. As you indicated, as summarized by the chairman of the committee, there is a good summary of what took place during the meeting yesterday, which went almost to 4 o'clock. But I'd just like to highlight two items that specifically pertains to your state of Yap. One is relating to the dry talking and new vessel that is being sought for the government of the People's Republic of China to provide to the FSM for use in Yap. When asked how long that process would take place, it was pointed to the committee that it would take two years, which is a little bit different than 10 months that people were informed that it would take the new vessel to be constructed. And relating to the dry talking, yes, the secretary indicated that there is, they have found a dry talking facility in PI that would do the dry talking at the cost estimated as indicated in the report of 2,42 vessels. Very interesting indeed. And the other issue, the second issue on the ODA from the government of Japan. When asked, it was pointed out during the meeting that by no other than the Secretary of Foreign Affairs. The next, the item under ODA or ODA grant from Japan should address projects in Yap. When asked about the status of request from the state for a vessel, we were informed about the new vessel from China, as well as maybe there is another vessel coming. For where, I am not sure, but these are the items that I like to highlight in the discussion that I don't seem to see any of it except for the dry talking in the report. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Urusmau. Panuelo.
Speaker, I left out few items, and I'd like to just cover. I knew, reading the report, because they were not itemized. The other items that we, your committee to wait on the president, discussed, of course, was the nominations. The nominations of Alex Naroon for the FSM Trust Fund, National Government Rep. That's been transmitted from president, and it's before Congress right now. And of course, Mr. Joe Enlet, who is the nominee for our new office, the consulate office in Portland, Oregon, that's the second nomination. And the third nominations that is before Congress is Peter Karangvel and Miss Yuko Nakasone. And these are nominations for Norma, renewal of their membership. I want to highlight, Speaker, that when we discussed nomination for the FSM Trust Fund, Alex Naroon, it was, it was brought to us information that, that nomination of the other state members on the board of the Trust Fund, FSM Trust Fund, we understood, I think, that information was contrary to what we understood from our meeting. There was amendment that was made to the FSM Trust Fund, I do not know when, but that amendment basically changed the nomination so that now the nominations are to be nominated by governors, respective governors of the four states, and with the advice and consent of the respective legislatures. That was the information that was reported to your committee to wait by the chief of staff. So I think that's, that's known now. And the other item I left out, Speaker and members, is the operational budget that for Y12, their proposed operational budget is 1.5 million, and your committee asked about the fares that they plan to implement. Secretary of TCI reported that they're working on it, and that would be transmitted to Congress for, for our information. And lastly, as you can see, when the president, Vice President proposed their supplemental, I'm sorry, their, their topic for discussion with your committee to wait, the first item is supplemental budget request. And of course, I asked them if there is any available funding, because we know that now it would be fruitless to submit supplemental, knowing that our revenue projection may be very low at the moment. Thank you, Speaker. This is what I wanted to add to the earlier summary I made to the committee to wait.
Chairman Panuelo. Short recess. Moved and seconded, so there is now a motion before us to adopt the special committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion adopted. We have now adopted special committee report number 20-07. If there's no objection, we'll go back up to item number 14, standing committee reports. Chairman Figuerre, you have the floor.
Point of privilege, Speaker.
Point of privilege. State your point.
Thank you, Speaker. I want to ask that we recognize the popular look and melove of Kiti, who's at the observing the session, Norval Antonio Sarabio.
Thank you. It's always nice to see the local chief executives attend our session, although we'd like more citizens to pack our gallery, but I guess it's during working days, and everybody's busy.
Speaker.
Any more point of privilege? Floor Leader, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I'd like to follow suit by also introducing two of my constituents who are observing our session this morning. They are Leslie Jaida from the island of Da and Saplan Piset from the island of Nama. Let's give them a round of applause, please.
Thank you. It's always nice to have especially people from other states attending our session. Chairman Figuerre, you have the floor.
Thank you. I, I move to place standing committee report number 20-42 on the standing committee report for action.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt standing committee report number 20-42. Discussion? Floor Leader, you have the floor.
Speaker, just to make sure that we're not violating any of our rules, I hereby move that any relevant rule that may impede our action on the report would be suspended.
It's been moved and seconded that any rule that may impede our action on the adoption of the said report be suspended. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The rules are now suspended. We are still on discussion of the standing committee report. Chairman Figuerre, you have the floor.
Move for the adoption of the report.
It's been moved and seconded that, again, that we adopt standing committee report number 20-42. Any discussion? Question has been called for. If no objection, we will vote on the said report. All in favor of adoption of standing committee report number 20-42, say aye.
Yes.
All opposed, say nay. Standing committee report number 20-42 has now been adopted by Congress. Any more reports, Chief Clerk?
There are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Next item, 16.
Mrs. Speaker, item 16, assignment of measures and communications. We have a referral sheet number 20-39.
Chairman and members, please take note of the assignment of measures and communications. Next item.
Mrs. Speaker, item 17, unfinished business. We have one item under unfinished business, and it's CB number 20-92 for first reading. CB number 20-92 is a bill for an act to amend section 605 of title IX of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia as annotated to create a new special polling place located outside of the Federated States of Micronesia and for other purposes.
Short recess. Vice Chairman of JYNGO, Alek, you have the floor. Vice Chairman Neath.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm so moved.
Member of deferring CB number 20-92 to January session, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any further, oh, we have now deferred CB number 20-92 to January session. Any more unfinished business, Chief Clerk?
There are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Next item.
Item 18, bill calendar, there are none. I'm sorry. We have override functional act number 20-59 from your committee on Ways and Means.
Chairman Figuerre.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, I keep looking at that gift over there. Really curious of watching it. But for that, I move that Congress repass Congressional Act number 20-59.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress repass Congressional Act number 20-59. Discussion?
Speaker.
Floor Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just want to state further that I am in a situation where Father Isos said in his, in his history report or book, in which he used a term called caught in a squeeze. I'm saying this because I'm really caught in a squeeze, because I do agree with all the points that the president mentioned in his veto message. I think the points are very good, they're very valid, and this Congress need to really look at them very seriously. On the other hand, I also see that public projects are really very good and very beneficial to our constituents. So at the same time, I am just confused as to where I should be, since I agree with the points mentioned by president. At the same time, I'm looking at the importance of the public projects to our constituents. As, as I said, they're very beneficial and good to the welfare of the people in our states. Thank you.
Thank you, Floor Leader. Any more discussion? Question has been called for. If no objection, we shall vote by delegation.
State of Chuk, Chairman Aritos. State of Kusai, Chairman Wally. State of Pompeii, Chairman Panuelo.
Aye, my.
State of Yap, Chairman Urusmau. Chairman Urusmau. Mrs. Speaker, all the four states voted for.
Thank you, Chief Clerk. Congress has repassed Congressional Act number 20-59, therefore overriding the president's veto. Next item. Any more bills?
There are none, Mrs. Speaker. And the next item is item number 19, resolution calendar, there are none.
Next item.
Item number 20, introduction of bills and resolutions.
If you have any bills or resolutions to introduce, please pass them forward to the Chief Clerk. Next item.
Item 21, miscellaneous communications, none, Mrs. Speaker.
Next item.
Item 22, miscellaneous business.
Any?
Short recess, Mrs. Speaker.
Short recess. Miscellaneous business?
Yes, Speaker. Do I still have it?
Chairman Perman.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Good morning to you, members and all that is observing our session this morning. Well, I have a name here. I don't know if it's Chairman Aritos' constituents or mine, but I want us to recognize him. It's Satao Miki from Socas. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman Perman. Any other miscellaneous business? Chairman Urusmau.
Oh, you're like Speaker, you're reading my mind too. The Speaker, I, I want to override, I, I am, I join my next-door brother here in feeling the squeeze between the points raised by, some of the points raised by president and the need of the public project appropriation. I, I think there is, there are some urgent need for those items that were specifying the item veto, in the veto, and I had hoped that, and I'm praying that perhaps in January, finance gonna come up with some magic to increase the revenue protection by maybe 11 million dollars, so we can address some of those urgent needs. I also wish to raise my disappointment at the administration. It seems that in many of our sessions, it's very heartbroken to know that our captain is absent from, from Pelker. I, I know in the past, it has always been the practice that when there is a session of Congress... Congress, that the president is on island to meet with the Committee to Wait and also on issues that are of urgent importance to the nation. I appreciated the meeting with the Vice President. I think it was very informative, and I was glad that he agreed to take upon himself to, I mean, to go at the meeting as required by our rules of procedure. So while I was torn between two issues here, one, the need for public projects, I also understand where the president was coming from, and I hope that money will be found to address those needed programs and projects. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Rusmaul. Chairman Alec, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My intervention is in relation to the report of the chairman of the committee to wait on the president. As noted in the report, there are four areas that the funding from the Ida Haiti will be used for, and my concern is who is making the decision of where to spend the money? Is it Pro Bank or HUSS? So that's a concern that I hope we address properly, so that such a practice is not repeated in later financial assistance. I also recall that we require some offices, departments and offices, that when they seek financial assistance from other resources, we need to look at the proposal that they're submitting before the actual submission is sent. And I don't recall any submission from the executive branch or the Department of Finance for HUSS to consider before they actually agree on the use of the funding provided under the Ida Haiti. So that's a concern that I have, that I hope is not being repeated, and that for Congress to make some final decision on that before we actually implement those projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Alec. Does anyone have a response to that, or?
No, Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Net, Vice Chairman Net?
I don't have a response, but I'm just, I just want to render my views on the override. I mean, it...
Go ahead.
We're not, we look like we're the bad guys, but we should not be that, because we had reached out to help the nations integrated by putting out twelve million dollars to be reimbursed, and it has not been reimbursed. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Net. Chairman Panuelo?
Speaker, I merely wish to respond to the comments made by Senator Alec, and that's regarding the Ida money that he was referring to in the Committee to Wait. I believe that, and other members can, you know, supplement, I believe that the process of coming to the amounts that were specified in all the sectors were a lengthy process that the executive engaged in with the World Bank and consolidation with the states. But the purpose of the 5.5 million that was advanced or spending before Congress to adopt is to further review and design of those projects in those specific sectors, and approval of those grants will be forwarded to Congress for further approval or adoption. So that's just a short addition to share with Senator, because that was discussed with your Committee to Wait, with the members of the cabinet, who discussed with your Committee to wait. But I just want to add that it's a lengthy process that our government has been undertaking with World Bank and consolidation with our states to come up with the priorities. And you recall that the states came up with some of the priorities, I believe it was eight, and the national government came up with four or six priority areas that were indicated. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Panuelo. Any other Misselene's Business? Chairman Gol.
Thank you, Speaker. I understand that the confusion of Congress of these priority projects for our nation, whoever responsibility of this communication or information, the Department of RND, that should be submitting all the detailed report to updating our Congress. And that is why we have some kind of confusion, because we know those will be deciding all the projects, and we know that the IPIC, they're the one that deciding all the states. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Gol. Any more Misselene's Business? If no more, next item, Chief Clerk?
Announcements, Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Wali, announcement?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. No announcement.
Chairman Figuer?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. If there are no committee meetings, I'd like to ask members of your committee on Ways and Means to meet immediately after this morning's session to make decision on some bills pending before the committee. These are urgent bills and resolutions, so if there are no other committee scheduled meeting after this morning and word after lunch, we, I ask that we meet and decide on those measures. Thank you.
Members, take note. Chairman Alec. Chairman Perman.
No announcement.
Chairman Panuelo.
No announcement, Speaker.
Chairman Gol.
Special announcement to the DNC members, that our co-chairman on RNDs give up the day of Monday, so your committee will held a public hearing Monday at eight-thirty. And, Mr. Speaker, just said on record that I didn't introduce those two gentlemen just walk out from our gallery because of the reflection of the sun out there, that's why I didn't introduce. Doesn't mean that we are disrespecting them. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Gol. Chairman Rusmaul?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Your committee on education will have its oversight hearings with the Department of Education on Monday at one-thirty in the afternoon at the hearing room. Issues, as I indicated yesterday, will be on eight-point-three million AA grants on teacher certification, school accreditation, everything and anything under education, including scholarships and all. So one-thirty Monday in the afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Members, take note. Vice Chairman Net. Senator Aritos. Vice Chairman Conman. Floor leader, Harper?
Speaker, there is no announcement, but if members wants to go home, then I'm ready for the usual motion.
Thank you, floor leader. You have the floor.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we stand in recess until ten AM tomorrow or Monday?
Tomorrow.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress stands in recess until ten o'clock tomorrow morning. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Congress stands in recess until ten AM tomorrow morning.